It's 7:05, we'll call the meeting to order and all members present with the exception of Mr. McCoy, who we knew wouldn't be with us tonight. Unfortunately, Mr. McCoy's father Ronald McCoy passed away this past Thursday. Ronald McCoy was a former employee of the Public Building Department. So, just wanted to publicly offer our condolences both to fellow member Mike McCoy and to Vincent McCoy, who is an employee of the Public Buildings Department in Wilmington. So, our thoughts go out to the entire family. And we'll begin with the transmitting of Treasury warrants 39, 39A, 39B, 40, 40A, 40B, 41, and 41A. Do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
I'll second.
Made in second, and anything further? All in favor? It's unanimous? Our first scheduled appointment this evening is with Joseph Durani. Oh, I'm sorry?
The minutes?
Oh, the minutes, I'm sorry. Minutes of February 2, 2009. Do we have a motion?
Motion to accept as read, as printed. Second that.
Anything further? All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Our first regularly scheduled appointment is scheduled for 7 o'clock with Joseph Durani of Jomiko USA Inc., and it's regarding a public hearing on the application for Class II Garage License for property located at 603 Main Street. Mr. Durani? Good evening. Have a seat if you would.
Have you done this?
Ah, please. Mr. Carroll, take them. And if you could tell us, certainly feel free to have a seat. If you could let us know what you had in mind at 603 Main Street, and perhaps we have a couple of questions or comments, and we'll go from there. So, I understand you're looking for a used car license?
Yeah.
Okay. And you are Mr. Durani?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, I've been in this location two years ago. Have dealer license, 2007, 2008, and because this we have renovation, I passed due to it was expired, so now that's why I renewed the license.
Okay. So, I didn't remember that you were actually the license holder previously at that same location.
Yeah.
Okay. Questions or comments from the board?
We have recommendations.
Yeah, if we could get those recommendations, and I know that we did want to address a...
We had a favorable recommendation from the Chief of Police, who has reviewed the application, indicating the business was formerly MJD Auto Sales and was licensed by the town to operate a Class II garage. They found nothing in Mr. Durani's background that would preclude him from obtaining a license to operate the Class II garage in this property, and so they have no reason in which to recommend denial. They have no problem. The Fire Department writes that the Wilmington Fire Department recommends no action be taken on the application submitted by Joseph Durani for a Class II garage license at 603 Main Street. As of this date, the Wilmington Fire Department has not received any documentation regarding the integrity of the underground storage tanks and associated piping. I had additional conversation with the, with the fire chief as well, and their concern is, as it relates to a gas station operation, that if it's going to be a gas station, then this needs all to be complied with, and I believe Mr. Durani has been notified of that fact. It's unclear to me as to what it is he's going to be using the property for. And toward that end, the building inspector has indicated that the applicants, in applying for their Class II auto dealer's license under the town's bylaw, need to demonstrate that they are in fact an auto repair shop or an auto body shop as a principal use in order to qualify for the accessory use of auto sales. Although the parcel has all the appearances of an auto repair shop, this is Mr. Spalding, Inspector Building, speaking now, he indicates he sees no activity at the above address to demonstrate that they are in fact in business as an auto repair shop. So, he's essentially indicated that if in fact they are going to operate in accordance with the zoning bylaws, then they would comply based upon the plans that they have submitted in terms of where they would keep the two vehicles, et cetera. But at this point, there's no indication that it is a, that there's any other business going on there, and my recommendation to the Board of Selectmen would be that if they're so inclined to give the license, that the license should only be given if there is an actual auto repair or auto body shop at that location. And so, I presume Mr. Durani can tell us if that's his intent.
Yeah, we're actually, we're gonna open soon, that's why we're gonna renew the place. Now, we do everything, so we start doing everything. So, we start with the dealer license and the garage now. If you see everything in the gas station, taking care, canopy, everything. So, we're gonna be back in the business.
Yeah, I think we certainly understand you don't necessarily do everything at once, and sometimes your plan is to do things in phases, and I think that's okay. But let me ask you this. Is it your intention to have the auto repair portion of the business up and running before you actually sell vehicles? Because that's what I think the manager is referring to our zoning bylaw that says that we only allow used dealerships in this kind, this type, when there's not a repair shop that's ongoing. So, do you plan on doing that first, having your auto repair up and running?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, then, as much as anything, want to make sure that people who are applying for these things understand the rules that they have to play by, and then we'll worry about making sure that you do. So, yeah, I know that we, you know, we give alcohol licenses, for example, before, you know, before the establishment is complete, they need to kind of do things in order. So, I'm certainly okay with giving the license as long as we just instruct the manager to hold the license until the applicant can demonstrate to the building inspector there's their auto body shop is back up and running, or auto repair shop. Does that make sense? Is that something you can live with, too?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the fire lieutenant has indicated that it's his understanding the property is for sale. Is the property for sale? That's not what you indicated to us?
No, I'm leasing the property. I don't think it's for sale. I'm leasing the property.
Are you under a written lease for a period of time? Yeah?
Mr. Chairman, just so as long as I understand, the direction from the board is that the vehicles can only go on sale at the site if there is a working principal use operation, that being a garage, that we would instruct the building inspector if there is a, if there is a sale of the two vehicles going on without an operation, a garage operation, then you'll be asked to cease and desist.
No, we're gonna open garage, 100 percent.
Okay. Yeah, I think you were, that certainly was my intent when we started talking about that. Any other questions or comments from the board?
We're not talking about the pumps, right? They're selling their gas. It's got nothing to do with this license here we're voting on tonight?
Well, I think the Fire Department was essentially saying, there is no gas station, so don't let that be the principal use if you plan on issuing the permit, but auto repair or auto body would be sufficient also as a principal use. Did I have the Fire Department's position?
You do, sir.
Okay. Anything else from the board? Any questions or comments from the audience? Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we grant that license contingent on the issues we just went over, that the garage has to be open, and there is no gas sales there.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Made in second, and anything further? All in favor? It's unanimous? Thank you. Good luck with the renovations. Okay. If you have any questions, certainly contact the manager's office. Thank you, sir. Our next scheduled appointment is with Frank Anzalati, Massachusetts Package Stores Association Inc., and it's regarding a request for a one-day alcohol license on Wednesday, September 29, 2010, from noon to 6:00 p.m. at the Shriners Auditorium. Gentlemen?
Good evening.
My name is Ben Weiner, I'm past president of Massachusetts Package Store Association.
I am Frank Anzalati, I'm the Executive Director of the Association.
Good evening to you both.
Thank you for having us.
I know that you'd submitted a pretty detailed letter, but for the benefit of the board and the audience, could you just tell us what you had in mind?
Well, the Association represents the liquor stores across the state, and one of the things we offer them once a year is an event where they can actually come in and see some of the new products, especially for the holiday seasons, and sample some of those products, so they know what it is they're going to be purchasing to sell in their stores, and have a better opportunity to be knowledgeable about it before they sell it to their consumers. So, it's a day of education for the retailers, if you will. The event is a closed event, by the way, it's by invitation, and it's only to the retailers and their staff, it's not for the public.
Questions or comments from the board? Do you have any recommendations?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, we have a recommendation from the police chief, who has reviewed the application and recommends approval of the one-day alcohol license for the event just described by Mr. Anzalati, to be held on Wednesday, September 29, 2010, from noon to 6:00. And also, Town Council, in an advisory opinion, has also weighed in that the town may grant the one-day alcohol license in this particular instance in accordance with all applicable statutes. This is the board's desire to do so. The standard fee, as established by the board, is $100.
Questions or comments?
If I may, just a couple of things before you take your vote. This, I know, probably seems a bit early for a request for a license, September of 2010, but the reason for that is that our planning of these events takes more than a year. I mean, we were planning our show for this fall well, you know, well into last year, so we need to have that lead time to know that we're coming here. And also, for the benefit of the auditorium, should this be denied, we would want them to have the opportunity to lease their space on that date if that were the case. So, that's the reason for the early request. And the only other comment and request I might have is that we are thinking about perhaps doing a dinner for the guests afterwards, which might be a wine pairing dinner, so if it were necessary, could we extend the hours on that day? It would be the same guests, not for the public.
What hours would you request?
If we were to do that event, probably until 10:00 p.m. 9:00 to 10:00 p.m.
Yeah, if it's the, if it's the board's inclination to grant the license, the one-day license, perhaps we could specify the hours that are requested, subject to the approval of the police chief. And that way, if there's any issues, we're not thinking of, from a public safety standpoint, he could address them. Does that make sense?
It may likely be the requirement of a detail officer, which I'm sure is standard...
And we do that kind of thing anyway, yeah.
Okay. Questions or comments from the board? No, any questions or comments from the audience? Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we grant the one-day license to the Association with the September 29, 2010, from noon to 10:00 p.m., subject to police chief approval of the hours.
Second.
Made in second, and anything further? All in favor? It's unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, we won't ask you to sign this, because we have 12 noon to 6:00 p.m. on the license. We'll do up a new license, ask the board to sign it in a ministerial way at the next meeting, and also give us time to confirm with the police chief that there's not a problem. Assuming that, then we'll mail the license out to the applicants.
Sounds good.
Terrific.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Have a good night, good luck with the event.
Thanks.
Thank you.
See, the motion included the $100.
Our next appointment is scheduled for 7:20 with Beverly Shea, Chairman, and Judy Waterhouse, Member of the Conservation Commission. It's regarding a proposed land stewardship program. Ladies?
I want you to know that we came this afternoon, we got this thing all set up, and they moved it.
Oh, boy. Well, we'll give you an extra amount of time.
I think it was, I think Winifred, yeah, we needed to make room the way you had it set up, and Winifred came in and took care of it with Michael Rocker, so it should be all set.
So, if you could, do you guys have something else to do while we pitch it up? Correspondent?
We just want to watch you.
Do you want to do a couple communications?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Oh, that's okay.
We have a letter, Mr. Chairman, from Governor Patrick and Lieutenant Governor Murray regarding the Chapter 90 Local Transportation Aid, informing us that the funding for the Commonwealth in 2010 will be $150 million, and that the, this particular letter certifies that the town of Wilmington's apportionment of Chapter 90 funds, construction funds, will be $580,693. We had estimated that the number would be $579,190. So, we're certainly okay in terms of our plans, it's just a difference of about $1,500, and in this case, it's $1,500 out to the good. So, that's the number that the Public Works Department will be working with in 2010. The board has correspondence from Catherine Dunphy, the Chairman of the MWRA Advisory Board, that was sent to Fred Lasky, the Executive Director of the MWRA, regarding their recommendation to approve the application of the town to become a member of the MWRA Water Distribution System. And also, in this document is contingent approval for the emergency water supply withdrawal for this year, if necessary, so that if for some reason, membership in the MWRA does not go forward, then we would still be able to access the emergency water supply for the emergency, with the emergency withdrawal permit. And tell you that I will be appearing before the MWRA Board of Directors on Wednesday, April 15, along with Mr. Woods, for the next stop in this particular process. And we have, as you know, already received the advisory board's approval. We fully expect to receive the okay on Wednesday from the Board of Directors, that would enable the town's admission. And then the next stop after that is the town meeting. We need the town meeting approval, and in addition, of course, we need the legislative approval, as well as the signature of the governor. The matter is inactive before the legislature at this point, and it's our hope that everything will come together by May. That's what our goal is. So, we are on target at this point, and of course, I will report back to you the results of the meeting on Wednesday. The board has a copy of a letter, was copied to the Chairman, from Catherine Craven, the Executive Director of the Massachusetts School Building Authority, regarding a site visit to conduct a senior study with reference to Wilmington High School. You recall that the town had sent in its statement of interest, its official statement of interest, last June, following meetings, public meetings, both in March and June of 2008. We had expected to hear by last November, but we are hearing now that they are looking at the town of Wilmington among approximately 40 other building projects, and they met this morning at 9:00. I was present for a portion of that meeting, and then there was a site visit at the high school, where they toured the high school and looked at the facility to identify any of the goals and concerns for the facility itself, particularly as it was, as it had been stated in the statement of interest that had been filed. So, they're making their assessment. They completed that tour today. They indicate that their goal is to have all the senior studies completed by the end of April, and to be prepared to make recommendations to the School Building Authority Board by May 27, although they indicated to the superintendent that this is a very flexible timetable, and it may be as much as the end of the year before we hear anything specific, but we will keep the board apprised as this process moves forward. It is now into the next step, though.
I think that's, that'll be good for now.
All right.
I might need your glasses, though.
Should we close the lights, do you think, or is that, are you picking that up okay? There we go. Great.
We are.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Bev Shea, the Chairman of the Conservation Commission, and the lady at the computer, who did all the work, as you all know, is Judy Waterhouse. We are here to give you an introduction to the land stewardship program of the Wilmington Planning and Conservation Commission. The stewardship program fulfills a longtime goal of planning and conservation. It was made possible by the town's funding of an intern who worked last summer to develop the program. Okay. You are as probably as surprised as I am to learn that we now have 930 acres of conservation land. Some are well-known, like the town forest and the town park, but others are virtually unknown. All of these parcels need to be managed by planning and conservation to support our mission, which is to administer and enforce the Massachusetts Wetlands Bylaw. It has long been a goal of planning and conservation to inform the public about these conservation lands, so that they can both utilize and help manage them. Stewardship is an excellent tool to bring about this goal. We are really excited at the prospect of having a vehicle to enlist people from the town who live near or use conservation lands, to help make them cleaner, safer, and more As you can see, stewards will volunteer to adopt an area, not only watching over it, but also advocating for it. Stewards will be given a monitoring and maintenance checklist that outlines their duties, and a land stewardship report form for reporting problems. We need to stress that stewards are not expected to police their land. They will be given copies of this program that spell out potential problems and how to handle them. Workshops for stewards will provide guidance in handling things like irresponsible visitors, illegal activities, or even fires. You will note that stewards will not be expected to walk their assigned areas more than quarterly. Naturally, some stewards will be able or elect to spend more time than others. You will also note that the paperwork has been kept to a minimum. The Land Stewardship Program Handbook, which will be given to each steward, contains a list of maintenance duties, as well as suggestions for increasing public awareness of his area. That handbook contains a list of 12 conservation rules that he is expected to share with others. Our conservation areas include the ones we all know, like the town forest, along with new areas and conservation subdivisions like Brookfield Estates, where the developer agreed to set aside conservation lands. In an area as large as the town forest, a steward might well have to enlist assistants. Hathaway Acres and the Glynn Road Berry Bog are known to most people in town, but it is worth noting that in Hathaway Acres, there is a path to Salem Street where canoeists and kayakers can put into Martin's Brook. There is also a fisherman's access and a canoe and kayak access at Shawshene Pines. Views of the canal there and the old Cranberry Bog at Blanchard Road should attract interest. Wilmington Gardens is an area with which I am not familiar, but I would expect that 53 acres makes it worth a visit. I visited Patch's Pond last fall with the Middlesex Canal Committee and found it well Kylie Estates is another conservation subdivision that's worth a visit. A hike into the Sawmill Conservation Area is a lovely and interesting hike. I've done it myself several times, at different times of the year, and always enjoyed it. You can show the next one now. You can see that the process for becoming a land steward is very straightforward. One just needs to care about an area enough to fill out the form and return it to the town manager's office. Anyone who wants to support a land steward just needs to express an interest. We have copies of the draft of this land stewardship program for you, the selectmen. We hope that you will be as excited as we are to have a way to involve townspeople in helping us carry out our charge of maintaining and preserving conservation lands for the town of Wilmington. Thank you for your attention.
Questions or comments from the board?
Is it, well, these, if you have like a map of these things, you talked about people going to visit them, and will they be like available if they want to do...
There's one on, it's the last page of the program, and everybody that...
Right.
We'll make copies available in the library, you know, we can do that, so that people could drop by and see what areas are available. And, you know, we never talked about it, but I would assume that if somebody lives in an area that's not on our list necessarily, and they come in and ask about it, that that's fine. There's an area in my neighborhood that I'm thinking of, and I'm pretty sure, because I think it was given by Jackson Brothers at the time our neighborhood was built, and I'm thinking that somebody lives across the street from that, might like to, the sandpit, Louis, that somebody might like to volunteer to watch after that. And it needs watching after.
I believe in this time of volunteerism, you'll see a lot of folks want to be able to come back and do things, kind of grassroots, and take the kids for a walk. Now, and Bev will attest that when they mentioned Grace Drive, I lived on Shawshene Ave and didn't even know that that was on. We used to walk down to the Aqueduct and take the kids fishing off of it, but you didn't know you could go down to Grace Drive and have a nice little walk in it. I did it after they even mentioned it, and then... And then you see it was the first one that was ever donated to the care and custody of conservation was even more important. So I think there's a lot of education that can be done to get people involved, and we just look for support to have that done. There's still more work to be done from the Conservation Commission to make sure we have all the rules and regulations done. And I think the internship and the fact that the town was willing to put some funds into creating a program that allowed that to even begin is great. I appreciate all of that.
Thank you. And to your comment, too, I think that it's kind of an interesting opportunity for people to volunteer. Sometimes the prospect of volunteering for any kind of committee or effort that the town is involved in, people get concerned about the time commitment. This is something that, you know, for a quarterly commitment, that's something that I would think is manageable for many folks who probably go out and enjoy those places anyways.
And for all those kids we want to keep in town, take them with you, you know, and show them where those great lands are, that they can help preserve the community to come through, or the time to come. We thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments up here? Questions or comments from the audience? Thank you again for your work and putting it together and for joining us tonight to try and publicize it and get the information out. Thank you.
Do you have a copy?
We provided them. All the selectmen have a copy of this.
Oh, I mean, you've got them all.
We have them, but if, I don't believe this has changed any, right, from what you have given us?
No, probably not. No, but if you know somebody that might be interested.
We can distribute them, sure.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Because we have made it up anyway.
Right.
It'll be good outreach.
Thank you. Thank you again.
Do you want to do the rest of communications before you do your report? Or do you want to do your?
I was trying to figure out if the Rouse, if the Rouse said he was going to the report, if they need to break down the local small communications. I think they're pretty squared away here.
Judy, will you be bringing this equipment with you or are you leaving it here for them?
The town's just like, it's mine. But that's got to cool off. You can't just shut that down, so I'll leave that.
Fair enough. Thank you.
I love your new chairs.
All right, that will continue with our 7:40 agenda item, which is the chairman's presentation of the Board of Selectmen's annual report. And this was a, I guess I'd call it a custom that was begun a few years back. I believe Mr. McCoy was the chairman at the time that we started to do this. So, dear fellow resident, as the vast majority of cities and towns struggle to balance the budget and avoid wholesale layoffs, the town of Wilmington continued to flourish throughout the calendar year 2008. With the support and guidance of the town manager, finance committee, and countless administrative personnel, along with the unparalleled commitment of thousands of volunteers, the Board of Selectmen has continued to support regional and local zoning and planning initiatives, address environmental concerns, recognize its men and women in uniform, and enhance the town's roads, playgrounds, and public works. With respect to planning and land use, members of the 2008 annual town meeting voted overwhelmingly to support the Board of Selectmen's efforts to reconstitute our Board of Appeals, increasing the number of permanent voting members from three to five. Town meeting members likewise supported a measure to enable expedited permitting of important economic developments proposed along Route I-93. This long-term planning initiative has positioned the town to receive priority development site funds of $100,000, and the project is essential to the overall success of the Tri-Town Development Interchange Project, which most agree is the flagship of regional planning efforts in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Finally, the Board of Selectmen supported a local zoning bylaw that since its passage in 2008 serves to prohibit so-called big-box developments in most areas of town, but promotes such important tax-generating development in the more appropriate locations along Route 93. As was the case in 2007, the Board of Selectmen again was successful in executing a fixed-fee agreement for services with the Office of Town Council as well as with professional, technical, and environmental experts. This arrangement has consistently enabled the town to accurately and adequately budget for legal and consultant fees, to avoid litigation by facilitating the town's access to preventative legal advice, and to avoid fee and expense-related disagreements. Throughout 2008, with the assistance of legal counsel, environmental consultants, and administrative personnel, the Board of Selectmen closely monitored legislative and regulatory developments regarding the proposed NET Waste Transfer Center, continued to manage federal litigation relative to the Maple Meadow landfill, and encouraged Health Department efforts to regulate operational activities at Crock Mile Farms. As has been the tradition in more recent years, again in 2008, the Board of Selectmen has assumed a leadership role in promoting the educational well-being of Wilmington students. In addition to endorsing a budget which responsibly funds our school system at all grade levels well beyond state mandates, the Board has been a vocal supporter of the master planning study of schools and had voted unanimously to authorize a statement of interest to be filed with the Massachusetts School Building Authority relative to the design and feasibility study of a new public high school. While individual members of the Board have expressed different opinions about the most effective way to ensure that Wilmington High School continues to fulfill the programmatic needs of our students, they have been unanimous in moving the process forward so that the taxpayers and the residents of Wilmington can make an informed, responsible decision about continuing to improve the quality of education in Wilmington. The town's commitment to our men and women in uniform has never been more evident. In 2008, under the leadership of Veterans Agent Lucy Maglia and with the help of scores of volunteers, the town of Wilmington paid a fitting tribute to America's Vietnam veterans by bringing the Moving Wall to Wilmington. After months of fastidious planning, the committee hosted several nights of meaningful and touching programs with an array of guest speakers, Gold Star Mothers, military personnel and their families, honor guards, bands, singers, and flyovers. Also in 2008, the town of Wilmington honored one of its most recent fallen heroes, Private First Class John F. Landry Jr., by erecting and dedicating to Private Landry's memory a permanent memorial at Silver Lake. It has long been my opinion that the single most unique aspect of Wilmington, and indeed its most valuable asset, is the willingness of its residents to be involved as volunteers. Danny Thomas once said that "success in life has nothing to do with what you gain in life or accomplish for yourself, it's what you do for others." I agree. The steadfast dedication of our volunteer board and committee members, the generous contributions of our volunteer coaches, fundraisers, and local business owners, and the consistent and overwhelming support from our friends and neighbors for any worthwhile cause are the fabric of this community. The Board of Selectmen was pleased to work with a variety of such civic organizations and volunteers throughout 2008, including the Ahern Foundation, the Wilmington Sons of Italy, Local Heroes, the Wilmington VFW, and the Wilmington Educational Foundation. In closing, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, I would like to acknowledge the dedicated service of Lance Corporal Stephen West, United States Marine Corps, who tragically lost his life during active duty in Thailand. Rest assured, Wilmington will never forget Lance Corporal West's dedication to duty and the sacrifices made by all of our men and women in uniform. And it's respectfully submitted by myself, Michael Newhouse, on behalf of the Board With that, we can resume communications.
Ms. Chairman, the Board has a letter from Kathleen Ludgate, the Regional Director of the United States Census Bureau, in which she is really just letting people know that beginning now through July of 2009, census employees will be visiting every housing unit throughout the community. And they are doing this in order to conduct the 2010 Decennial Census. In doing so, the Census Bureau has a responsibility to know the address and physical location of each place where people live or stay. And so this is really to let people know that the census employees who will be knocking on your door will wear official identification, they will carry handheld computers to capture physical addresses, and that is how you will know that they are legitimately from the Census Bureau. We know that the Census Bureau is reaching out to various departments, including the police departments and other organizations in town, to inform folks that this is going to be taking place. And we just received this, this letter this month and wanted to provide this information in as many public forums as that we possibly can.
If you could also, just on a, it's a different item, but similar. I know in the news this past week, there were a couple of towns, I can't remember offhand where they were, but there were folks posing as, as town personnel in order to gain access to homes and that, you know, for example, say they need to read the water meter and get out of the basement, then a second person would invade the home. While we're on this subject, what is the protocol for a town employee who needs to talk to a homeowner? What should they expect?
Typically, you would know that the person is coming, but in the event that they're responding to an emergency or knocking on your door for one reason or another, this might be somebody from the water department or the Department of Public Works. Ms. Chairman, they all carry identification. So not only would they be in uniform, a town of, which would have a, the name of the town of Wilmington on the uniform, they also have an official Town of Wilmington identification badge, which you should ask to see. Most likely, you would see the orange truck, the employee uniform, and the identification badge. If for any reason you're suspect, or you don't see this, or even if you see it and you have some questions, then you feel free to call the police department and they will send a cruiser down and verify that the person really is a town employee. But they all do carry the identification badges, and they're all in uniform.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The Board has a notification from Patricia Leavenworth, the District Highway Director for Mass Highway, regarding a Mass Highway project that will be going forward. They're informing us that they've evaluated the project for the I-93 traffic sign replacement that will go from Wilmington to Methuen, and they are going to begin the development process for that particular project, and they will keep us informed as that process goes forward. The Board also has correspondence from Metropolitan Boston Emergency Medical Services Council regarding the annual nomination of candidates for membership to the Board of Directors. This is a standard letter that comes out each year that's directed to the Chair of the Board of Selectmen in the 61 cities and towns of this particular emergency medical services consortium. And if anybody is interested from the community in being nominated and they meet the criteria, then they can be nominated by any one of the, any one of the boards. We've provided this information to the fire chief who handles this matter for us. The Board of Selectmen has also received a letter from Jane Lyman of Comcast informing them of certain changes that will impact customers in the town of Wilmington, specifically the introduction of new services. And in this case, they're talking about what they refer to as a value-plus LD Triple Play Bundle, which is available, including the video and the high-speed internet, as well as the digital voice services with the calling plan. They indicate the pricing for this, but they've also noted that they have provided all this information to their customers. We received this after the last Board of Selectmen's meeting, so in fact, the notification has also already gone out to all the customers who would have been notified if anybody has any questions as to, as to this particular issue or how to contact Comcast. If they're interested, they can call the town manager's office and we can certainly give them the number, but that number would have been included in their mailing. Ms. Chairman, the Board has the list of election workers for 2009, as submitted by the town clerk, who was requesting that the names included on this list be voted upon as, as election workers. It's an extensive list, and it is the list that we've seen in the, in the past, but this is the time of year that we typically do these appointments so that they're ready in time for the, for the first election of the 2009 season, which is the town election on April 25th.
You're talking 40-odd people?
Yes.
Almost 50 people.
Right. And just to mention, even though the, all of the offices are uncontested, and people will see election workers there and wonder why we need as many election workers as we have, we actually have it down to the bare minimum when there was an election of, that's not contested, but we still need to comply with state law, and the Secretary of State's office requires that there be at least two people at every one of the tables in each one of the precincts. And that's, that's the reason why you, you see the numbers that you see. So we would need a vote, Ms. Chairman, to appoint these election workers, and if you want me to read the names, I will. It's up to you.
I don't think it's necessary unless anybody else feels like they should. I just, I know many of these people have done this in the past, and it's something we do every year, just, I guess it never struck me as it did just now, just how many of them there are. Do we have a motion?
Take a motion to appoint the election workers?
I'll second.
May I second it? Anything further? All in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. The Board has a letter from Shelley Newhouse, the Health Director, asking on behalf of the Board of Health and the Healthy Wilmington Coalition, permission to hold an Earth Day Walk on Sunday, May 3rd. The walk would start at the Town Common at 1:00 p.m. and proceed down Adams Street, take a right onto Parker Street, then proceed onto Lowell and Main Street, and then come back to Church Street to the Town Common. The walk would be using the sidewalks that are available on these roadways, and it is a continuation, the Earth Day Walk is a continuation of the Wilmington Walks program that encourages community participation in physical fitness and wellness. And because they are going to be using the public streets for an actual walk, they would require the approval of the Board of Selectmen.
We don't have any scheduling issues or other problems?
No, sir.
Obvious. Okay. Do we have questions, comments, or a motion?
Or should we approve the permission for the Earth Day Walk?
May I second it? Anything further? All in favor? Unanimous?
Chairman, we have a letter from Louis Semaglia, in his capacity as the Director of the Department of Veteran Services, inviting the Board to attend and at the same time requesting that the Board approve the Memorial Day Parade Committee's request to conduct the parade for Memorial Day on Monday, May 25th, 2009.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
I'll make the motion that we give the Memorial Day request as the Director asked for.
Second? May I second it? Anything further? All in favor?
Board is being asked to consider a request from Judith Bagg, the public health nurse, relative to a disclosure that she wants to make in accordance with Chapter 268a, Section 20b, regarding her being able to teach CPR and/or first aid to members of the Massachusetts Department of Public Health Emergency Preparedness Region 4A Coalition. She would like to be able to teach this class. She was asked to do that by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. They would take place outside the usual working hours. It would not interfere with her duties as a public health nurse, but she needs to comply with the Mass General Law, the Conflict of Interest Law, and seek a 20b exemption. I would recommend that the Board consider this, although it would have been my understanding that the exemption should go to the Although it would have been my understanding that the exemption should go to the, her appointing authority, which in this case would be myself, the state ethics determined that she would require approval from the Wilmington Board of Selectmen in order to teach these classes. So the Board would need to find a, favorably that this would not be considered a conflict, and that they would give approval in this manner.
Anybody see any problem with it? Questions, comments, or a motion?
I make the motion that we grant the nurse to give the CPR classes.
Seconded.
Made in seconded. Anything further? All in favor? Unanimous?
The Board is being asked to consider a request of Khalid Hazy May to obtain a Hawk and Pedal license to sell ice cream. This would be a renewal, Mr. Chairman. The Board has given approval in the past. He is typically, or he has in the past been the vendor, the selective vendor at Silver Lake, Silver Lake. That goes through a competitive bid process, so I can't tell you that he would be again this year. But we have favorable recommendations from the Board of Health and the Police Department for the renewal of the Hawk and Pedal license.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
Motion, we approve the Hawk and Pedal license as written?
I'll second.
Anything further? All in favor? Unanimous?
That concludes the regular business before the town, Mr. Chairman.
How about comments? Any questions or comments from the audience?
Seeing none, then we'll move to new business or committee reports.
Do you want to recognize Charlie?
I was gonna, yeah, if you have any comments, certainly weigh in. I was gonna button up with, with the plaque too.
Oh, okay. Just recognize this is Charlie's last meeting, and it's been a pleasure the last two years working with you, Charlie.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll say the same as Lou. It's been great working with you, and you are more than a professional in this service.
Thank you.
I want to thank all of my family, friends, and supporters. I enjoyed the three years. Like I said, just life has gone a little different. I've got some other things that are on my plate right now. Who knows, maybe down the road I'll be back, but I have enjoyed it. I appreciated the Town Manager and the fellow board member's support. I think we've been able to go a long way in getting things done and keeping the town moving ahead, even though there's issues, even though we've had sometimes not agreed totally. We've been able to do what we needed to do to continue on with the town, and I see, I think this is a unique situation. I don't know there's ever been a time when the outgoing selectmen know he's going out and the incoming guy knows he's coming in at the same time. It's kind of like my successor's there in the audience. And hopefully, he'll continue the ball moving in the right direction. I've only spoken really with him at length once, and he seems to me anyways like he's, he's got the right ideas along, that'll fit well with the Board, but obviously, time will tell for sure. So I won't speak too much longer. I think we've been pretty good since I've been here, keeping the meetings at bay, as far as landfills, and being able to get everything done that we need to. So, once again, I just want to thank everybody, and good luck to you, Mike, when you come in here next couple of weeks.
Thank you. Charlie, I just wanted to personally thank you for, for the time you've spent on the Board. And what, if I were to sum up your tenure in, in one comment, would it be that when you had an opinion, you had something to say, you let us know, but you never labored over, you know, belabored a meeting or belabored a point. If something needed to be said, you said it, and otherwise, you didn't talk to hear yourself talk. So certainly, being a fellow member of the Board, appreciated that.
Thank you.
And I do have something here that I wanted to present to you, Charlie, on behalf of the Board. No, that'd be nice, too. Maybe Chuck, if we could, maybe stand right in front of the, right in front of the table here. Bev can get a Polaroid, as they say.
It's a good old, good old, good old. I did want to take this opportunity again to congratulate you and thank you on behalf of the Board for your time, your commitment, your professionalism. And this plaque reads, "Presented to Charles R. Fiore Jr. in grateful recognition of his three years of service to the citizens of Wilmington as a member of the Board of Selectmen and stated today, April 13, 2009." Again, thank you. Thank you. Good luck with the future of that.
That also was the first being videoed as somebody takes a still photograph. All right, with that, I think we can button up with important dates.
Okay, and I also just want to add my thanks to Selectman Fiore for his good advice and good work during the past three years. The first particular date, Mr. Chairman, is this week, we begin the curbside collection of yard waste. So all of this week will be the first week from the, Monday through Friday, the 13th through the 17th. Residents can put their yard waste out by the curb in biodegradable bags or in regular trash containers, but clearly visible as being yard waste. And, and the folks from the trash company will, will pick up and collect that. It'll be picked up hopefully on your regular trash day. Sometimes it's delayed a little bit, dependent upon the volume. There'll be two other weeks following, but this is the first week of the curbside collection. At the same time, this Wednesday, April 15th, the brush drop-off will take place at Old Main Street Recycling Area from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on Wednesday, and on Saturday, the 18th, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Where you can take your, your brush down to the particular facility, and the composting is available there as well. Please no grass clippings. We will collect leaves, and we will collect brush at that location, but no grass clippings. Also on April 18th, to remind the Board that they have been invited to participate in the opening day ceremonies at Rotary Park for the Wilmington Little League. The ceremonies begin at 10:00 a.m. on that particular date. As you know, you've given permission to Little League to have a parade, to reinstitute that program, and they will be marching from the Town Common area down to Rotary Park. And there will be a number of on-field activities that will include the introduction of special guests, a ceremonial first pitch, the singing of the National Anthem, and, and other activities, and the Board is all invited to, to participate. Again, the brush drop-off continues on the 22nd and 25th. And then also on April 25th, a reminder of the annual town election. The polls open from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The polling locations are here at the Town Hall, at the Bartwell School, and also at the Wildwood School. So those are the polling locations. Everyone is certainly encouraged to attend and to vote. If you're unsure where your polling location is, you can call the Town Clerk's office, and they will let you know. The second week of curbside collection begins on April 27th, so in two weeks after this week, there'll be a break for a week, and then from April 27th to May 1st will be the continuation of the curbside collection of yard waste. A just-advanced notice of the town meeting on May 2nd, to be held at the high school gymnasium. That begins at 10:30 in the morning. I would, I would note, just for, for people's information, there's also an SAT program going on on that day. We have asked that the parking lot, the main parking lot at the high school be reserved specifically for the town meeting, and the, the high school principal and the school department are cooperating, and the youngsters will be asked to park over at the Swain School parking lot. That's something that we can't control. It is done with the, with the SAT Board, and that will be held there at the high school on that day. However, we'll be regulating parking to ensure that there's enough parking for all of the members of the town meeting that will be attending. Of course, the SATs are over by noon time. Also, just if people are interested, the annual Good Guy Award Dinner is on May 8th, and I know that you can get tickets for the Good Guy from any number of committee members, and they've been advertising that in the local newspaper. And the Household Hazardous Waste Day that we conduct annually will be at the West Intermediate School parking lot from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on Saturday, May 9th. And we'll give you more information about that at the Board's next meeting. You can also look for information both in the most recent issue of Town Topics, as well as in, in the newspapers. And finally, I just want to mention, Mr. Chairman, in conjunction with the town meeting, this particular booklet, which is the Finance Committee Warren booklet, has hit the post office and will be distributed hopefully beginning this week. The book is, contains a copy of the budget that will be asked, that the Finance Committee will be asking you to vote, vote on, as well as all of the articles, notification of all of the articles that'll be coming up before the town, and of course, the Board will be discussing these articles, again, probably for a fourth time at their next meeting when we do the assignments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded. Made in seconded. All in favor?